Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's February 6, 2025, open session. First, Secretary Huddlecox, can you please take the role?
Yes, Commissioner Cozart, President. Commissioner McMahon.
I'm here.
Commissioner Stidham.
Here.
Commissioner Argo.
Here.
Vice Chair Hewlett.
Present.
Chair Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Tomstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
Here.
Commissioner Cash.
Present.
Commissioner Ducetti.
Present. Present.
Noting the presence of the forum, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today's meeting is being livestreamed and will be available in a few days on the NCPC website. If there is no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. Can we all please stand some pledges in their seats? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda item number two was reported to the chair. And first, I want to wish everyone who's part of the meeting here as this is our very first gathering since December. We remember that our scheduled meeting in January had to be conducted boldly with the all-worth of President Carter's passing because our original meeting today didn't have to buy that. So thank you to all the commissioners and staff who are working together to ensure the items on January's agenda were able to be reviewed and voted on without delay. Second, I would like to welcome Vallee McGowan, Congresswoman, President of the NCPC, and she joins unless Mr. Ducetti. She joins as a new alternate designated alternate for Chairman, former of the House Committee on Oversight and Government Reform. Mr. Ducetti, please extend to her our greetings. She's not present, I'm thinking.
I will certainly extend that. Thank you very much. I believe she is watching today and viewing the livestream. But we are very excited and happy to welcome her to the team for the NCPC. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you and happy to be here too as well. We look forward to working with all the commissioners. They're all very pleased to congratulate Commissioner Green on his reappointment to the commission. So thank you for joining us again for a second term and we look forward to all our work, continuing work together. Most importantly, I'm delighted to share that in December, our Executive Director Marcel Acosta received the very prestigious Ronald F. Kirby Awards for collaborative. This is from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Government. This is as I said, a prestigious board and very well-reserved. I shared the nomination letter that has my signature附to it. I must say, prepared by Julia and Michael. I want to thank the staff. It was clear from content and been working with the staff that Mr. Acosta is a very well-respected and regarded leader by the staff. Marcel, we're just so thrilled that your excellent leadership has been recognized through over 20 years' service and the tireless work you have committed to bringing disparate stakeholders together to create a better environment here in the capital region. So thank you for that. I just want to say that we're lucky to benefit from your leadership. And we file a loophole which we are a secret sauce. We are successful because we do engage all of our partners and we create something different than just on the list. So thank you for your leadership here in the nation's capital. That's terrific and we just want to thank you for your collaboration, your donation and your partnership. So congratulations. Agenda item number three was reported to the Executive Director, Part No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my mic off.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the kind words. And the award is really a reflection of the staff and to the extent that we worked very hard to collaborate with our sister federal agencies, the district and the many stakeholders of this region. So I do think that's the charge of this commission to do all that and to advance federal interests, but to do it in a way that makes sense and is compatible and benefits the region as a whole. So I think it really reflects the staff and the commission's work in this region. So I just have a few words. We do expect a busy spring for the commission, including projects on today's agenda, such as the draft master plan for Glen Echo Park and the Capital Water Rita. And over the coming months, the commission will review the title bid and draft master plan, Arlington National Cemetery Area Development Plan, the D.C. Harbory and Humphreys Master Plan at Fort Belvoir. We also are organizing in-person commission tours of Glen Echo Park before it comes to you for final review and the St. Elizabeth's Campus in Anacostia, D.C. You do have my full report in your packets and I'm happy to answer any of your questions that you might have.
Thank you, Marcel. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners online or in the chambers? Hearing none. Thank you, Marcel. We will move on to agenda item number four, and that is legislative updates. Secretary Megan Hoddlecox, could you please share the legislative updates with your commissioners?
Yes, I have two legislative items to report on this month, both on legislation we've previously reported to the commission, which have now become law. First, HR 4984, the D.C. Robert F. Kennedy Memorial Stadium Campus Revitalization Act was passed by the House in February of last year, by the Senate in December and was signed into law on January 4th. As the commission may recall, this act transfers administrative jurisdiction over the RFK Memorial Stadium campus to the District of Columbia for development, subject to a declaration of covenants that will be entered into with the National Park Service. Second, HR 1318, the Women's Suffrage National Monument Location Act was passed by the House in November of 2023, by the Senate in December of 2024, and signed into law also on January 4th. This act authorizes the Women's Suffrage National Monument commemorating the women's suffrage movement and the passage of the 19th Amendment to be located on the National Mall within the reserve. That concludes my legislative report. Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Just possibly one addition, and I don't have the bill number, but related to Medal of Honor and their passing through the House for their location act.
Yes, that that bill had been passed by the House in the previous Congress and then was reintroduced and is now in the Senate pending, as it was when the previous session of Congress ended.
Is there no further questions?
Ms. Chair, I'm sorry, this is the court reporter online. Your mic is off. I can't hear you over the transcript.
My mic is on. Can you hear me?
For me, at least, it sounds like you're very far from the mic that I can't really grab it well.
It might be your laptop.
I just closed the iPad, which was to the left of it. Can you hear me better now?
A little bit. It's kind of like you're so far from the mic. I'm not sure if maybe if you want to speak up, but.
I will speak up. Can you hear me now?
I'm sorry, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Oh, no, I'll try to accommodate whatever gremlin is in the mic today. Well, thank you again, Megan, and no questions from commissioners online or in the chambers. Okay. Agenda item number five is a consent calendar. There are two items on this month's consent calendar. The first item is to approve final site and building plans for the National Mall Carousel Site improvements submitted by the National Park Service. And the second item is to approve a report by the Zoning Commission on the text and map amendments to create a baby yard east zone in zoning commission case 23 through 27. Are there any questions or discussions from the consent calendar from commissioners online or in person? No questions? Hearing none. We will then ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. Move approval of the consent agenda, Chair. There's been a motion by Vice Chair Hewlett. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner McMahon. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Can the secretary please confirm the motion and take the vote by roll?
Yes, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomstall Williams? Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Ducetti?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. And we have five items today on the open session. Agenda item number six A is a request to approve comments on concept plans for Glen Echo Management Plan. And Stephanie is making the presentation. Stephanie?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The National Park Service requests comments on the conceptual Glen Echo Management Plan or Master Plan Amendment for Glen Echo Park in Montgomery County, Maryland. Overall, staff is recommending approval of the comments on the master plan to be addressed in the next submission. The commission reviewed the most recent master plan for the park in 2001. In December 2024, NPS hosted a NEPA scoping meeting for the plan amendment and will prepare a draft environmental assessment for review with the draft master plan this spring, followed by a final review and NEPA decision document this summer. Today, we are looking at the concept for the park's new master plan. At the concept review for a master plan, the commission should be focused on issues such as consistency with NCPC's comprehensive plan and other policies, appropriateness of the concept for the site, any particularly unique or complex issues, and any meaningful differences between alternatives. The 0.9 acre park has 13 resident arts and culture organizations located on the campus and sees approximately 350,000 visitors annually. The site is home to 30 buildings of varying ages and styles, as well as paths and picnic areas. The main parking lot is shared between the Glen Echo Park and the Clara Barton National Historic Site, which is located immediately to the northwest. Here we have a look at the master plan's boundary. For purposes of this graphic and throughout the presentation, the plan is rotated with north pointing towards the upper left. The Mini Haha Creek separates Glen Echo Park from the Clara Barton Historic Site, where visitor parking is shared between the two facilities and accessed via footbridge. And here, another look at the park is illustrated in the 2011 Glen Echo Park Clara Barton House Cultural Landscapes Inventory. This plan shows the arrangement of the existing structures, including an arcade, pool, dance hall, carousels, yurts and a bumper car pavilion, all of which are currently utilized as facilities for arts and culture programming. The existing Glen Echo Park Management Plan slash Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, dates back to 2001. The purpose of that plan was to analyze options for management of resources in developed areas within Glen Echo Park. The 2001 management plan established the existing governance structure for the park. This approach maintained traditional uses of the park, enhanced the park environment and provided an improved revenue stream with NPS as the landowner, Montgomery County as co-manager and the Glen Echo Park Partnership responsible for day-to-day programs and operations. For purposes of this review, the master plan amendment and the environmental assessment, or EA, will be the same document. The master plan amendment is needed because there is an unmet demand for additional arts and culture programming. However, all of the existing facilities at Glen Echo Park are fully programmed and there is no unused building space for additional public programming. As such, staff is recommending the draft EA evaluates impacts of the proposed master plan alternatives on land use, traffic and transportation, the visitor experience, vegetation, water resources, wildlife, cultural and visual resources, and the cumulative effects. The master plan amendment is intended to increase capacity for arts and culture programming, special events and future program related to history and the environment of the site. Overall, staff supports the plan's goals to increase the program capacity and improve the visitor experience through expanded amenities, enhance circulation and accessibility, and sustainable best management practices. The plan includes two potential alternatives that identify buildable zones where future development may be appropriate and allowable. But before I review those alternatives, I will provide a brief overview of the existing conditions and the context. Easements exist on the property within the management area boundary with the access road owned by Womata and the badge parking area owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. This area includes the Washington Aqueduct, which runs under MacArthur Boulevard from Great Falls to the district. Glen Echo Park is a National Registered National Historic District. The original 2001 Glen Echo Management Plan indicated that the park is integral to protecting the visual and environmental qualities of the Potomac Palisades, the CNO Canal Historical Park, the Clara Barton National Historic Site and the Potomac River. Here we have some photos of those contributing resources, including the Picnic Grove, the original park entrance and the arcade building. Additional photos here of the Chautauqua Tower and Yellow Barn, the Crystal Pool, Carousel, Cottle Up and Bumper Car Pavilions and the Spanish Ballroom. The master plan proposes to retain these contributing resources. However, it is unclear if any of these facilities are in need of repair. Therefore, staff recommends the master plan identify any existing facilities in need of rehabilitation and evaluate how the rehabilitation can be incorporated with future development and programming. Within these facilities, as well as those that are non-contributing, Glen Echo Park offers a variety of arts and culture program and uses, including art studios and classes, children's art and play spaces, performance space and dance halls. The Mini Haha Creek and Woodland, which separates Glen Echo Park from the shared parking lot at the Clara Barton Historic Site, is the primary natural feature on the site and drains into the Potomac River. The National Park Service restored the natural stream bed to its pre-development conditions in 1992. Staff recommends that any future development or programming within the Mini Haha Creek Woodland Natural Zone, as defined by the 2001 Environmental Impact Statement, is characterized as natural or open space and avoid structures or impervious surfaces. Staff also recommends the applicant document existing individual trees within the park, including any specimen trees in the master plan, to avoid potential conflicts with future development. Visitors primarily arrive to Glen Echo Park by car and park in a surface parking lot, as I said, at the adjacent Clara Barton Historic Site, then cross the Mini Haha Woodland footbridge to enter the park at its north end, right here. Alternative transportation options are available, including a county bus stop and the MacArthur Bike Way. And now that I've covered the existing conditions and context, I will provide an overview of the two concept alternatives. First, I'd like to note the concept master plan proposes two alternatives for future development with different locations of buildable zones. Specific programming within the buildable zones is not included in the master plan. NPS intends to leave these areas undefined until future site and building plan projects are initiated. Within the buildable zones, future development could range from uncovered hardscaped areas to outdoor pavilions to structures with conditioned interior spaces. Alternative one on the left has less buildable area and less impact on the Mini Haha Creek and Woodland compared to alternative two, with more retention of the existing buildings and reclaims open space at the center of the park by locating new development around the perimeter of the site. Alternative two provides more buildable area with the same buildable zones as alternative one along the western boundary, as seen here at the bottom of the plan. It also has more potential impact on the woodland and less retention of existing buildings. Alternative two restores some of the centralized development that existed historically when the park functioned as an amusement park and includes a new pedestrian connection between the park and the adjacent Clara Barton Historic Site. Accessibility improvements are common to both alternatives. Both alternatives will also address stormwater management and flooding issues through a combination of infrastructure and vegetation and propose PV panels on all new buildings and the arcade. Alternative one proposes to demolish the majority of the centrally located yurts, which are non-contributing features. This creates an open space in the middle of the park with proposed buildable zones located around the perimeter of the site, as indicated here with the blue bubbles. This also maintains two existing viewpoints from park entrances to the carousel, slightly improving the view from the main parking area with removal of the yurts. Moving on to alternative two, this alternative proposes to demolish all of the yurts, the potter shed and a restroom building that is next to the carousel. This would allow for additional buildable zones. Buildable areas would be centralized around the carousel in this alternative. An additional accessible entrance, as I mentioned, from the parking area across the Mini Haha Creek and Woodland is also proposed. This would open up a view to the carousel from the parking area. While staff finds alternative two would have a greater impact on the Mini Haha Creek and Woodland due to the proposed crossing, it would improve connectivity to the parking area. Therefore, staff recommends the EA evaluate the impact of the proposed pedestrian crossing on the Mini Haha Creek and Woodland and consider options for mitigating those impacts. Here again, we have the alternative side by side for comparison. Overall, staff notes it is difficult to evaluate the alternatives without knowing the potential program uses and type of development, such as a building versus a pavilion or open space within the buildable zones, as the use and development typology will affect other plan elements, such as the views, circulation and the overall visitor experience. Therefore, staff requests the applicant refine the potential program uses and indicate the anticipated types of development needed to accommodate the program within the buildable zones in the draft master plan and the EA. I will now briefly discuss transportation and access as it relates to both alternatives. As I mentioned earlier, the park is serviced by the county ride on Bus Route 29, whose stop is located near the north end of the site along MacArthur Boulevard. This bus provides an approximately 12-minute connection to and from the Friendship Heights and Bethesda Metro stations. During the EA public scoping meeting, several park users expressed concern with bus service timing, especially in the evenings when bus service ends before park programs, such as dance classes conclude. However, operation of this bus service is outside of the National Park Service's authority. Therefore, staff requests the National Park Service work together with the Glen Echo Park Partnership for Arts and Culture and Montgomery County to see if connections to the existing parking transit and the MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way can be improved and public transportation operating hours better aligned with the park program times. In addition, the park is located at the intersection of the Capitol Crescent Trail and the CNO Canal towpath, which attracts millions of visitors per year. The MacArthur Boulevard Bike Way, highlighted here in pink, runs directly adjacent to Glen Echo Park and crosses through the park's badge parking area. While the existing bus service and bicycle facilities are available, staff finds the pedestrian and bicycle connections between Glen Echo Park and the bus stop and bike way are indirect and not well-defined. In addition, the master plan does not address how transportation needs and parking demand will be managed to accommodate the increase in visitors that would result from expanding the park program. Therefore, staff requests the applicant continue to work with NCPC staff to determine if a transportation management plan for Glen Echo Park is necessary. So this concludes my presentation. I have incorporated the executive director's recommendations into the presentation and they are also listed here for your reference, as well as in the executive director's report. And I'd like to now introduce the acting partnerships coordinator for the George Washington Memorial Parkway Unit, Mark Malloy, to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Welcome, Mark.
Is this fine?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Good afternoon. I'm Mark Malloy. I'm the acting partnership coordinator for the George Washington Memorial Parkway, which is a unit of the National Park Service that manages Glen Echo Park. In 2001, the National Park Service completed a management plan for the Glen Echo Park. At that time, the park was in poor condition. It took a collective effort from partners in the community to save it. Through a long-term agreement, Montgomery County took on a key role in maintaining and investing in the site. A new nonprofit partner, the Glen Echo Park Partnership for Arts and Culture, was established to manage cultural programming and daily operations. Today, thanks to this collaborative approach, nearly all of Glen Echo Park's facilities are fully used and programmed. Building on that success, this updated management plan will explore ways to expand capacity for additional programs and events, improve circulation and wayfinding, address accessibility challenges and enhance climate resiliency. We held a public virtual meeting on December 3rd and had over 75 people in attendance. We received over 100 correspondence during our comment period, including numerous artists, dancers and other visitors of the park, as well as our Glen Echo partners. So we're excited to hear your perspectives on the project at the scoping phase and thank you for your time and insights.
Well, thank you very much, Mark. And hey, we definitely have one remaining here just for a moment while we ask, is there any questions from commissioners online or in? Were there any questions for Stephanie or Mark? He said.
And taking pleasure with that push and answer. I'd like to get a better sense of these yurts and the non-contributing buildings that are being slated. Can you give me some sense of the relative age and the condition of those buildings?
Sure. I think you may be best to speak to that.
And I think actually Christine probably might be more plugged in on some of those aspects.
Sure. I'll have to look in our cultural landscape report, but the yurts were a temporary exhibit from the National Mall that were located on site. And the programming for the pottery is limited to the number of people who can fit in those yurts. And the reason they were put in for some or all to be removed is because they are non-contributing and there are space limitations within each one. And we're looking at a new configuration for the pottery program that would allow more people and a better flow for people who have accessibility challenges. So in option one, we're reserving a few for the new site plan and in option two, all would be removed. The other building for removal that was in alternative two is a modern bathroom facility located right next to the central carousel. And that would be the proposal. And alternative two is its removal for flow from the additional bridge access from the parking area and then opening up a sightline central around that carousel area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Are there other questions from commissioners? Additional questions? Hearing none. Again, thank you, Stephanie and Mark Malloy. We appreciate it. And is there a motion to approve comments on the concept plans for the Glen Echo Management Plan Amendment?
So moved, Madam Chair.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hewlett. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Thank you very much. I'm now open. I'll now open up the commission to the commission for this. I'm going to start with Commissioner Stidham, please.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation and working with staff. It's been very good. Just the, you know, Glen Echo is sort of an interesting piece of the national park system, which here in the metropolitan area, we have a lot of unusual pieces in the system. And we're thankful to have those pieces and to care for them. The previous management plan that was spoke about, because it was early in the parking in our partnership, it really limited the development of the site to ensure for the preservation. So we are, as was mentioned, we are at capacity in terms of programming. So this new plan would allow for additional development, which is why you see buildable zones without particular programming defined, because right now we can't expand beyond what is currently there. So this provides that opportunity for more programming that will figure out what that is moving forward. But first, we have to figure out, can we allow for that to take place? So that's really a key piece of the plan. So we really look forward in working, continuing our partnership. It's been very successful in providing more arts and cultural spaces here.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
Yes. I'm really excited to see this. I live a block off of MacArthur Boulevard and I have nine grandchildren and all of them. And all of them, all of them except the littlest at this point. Have been to various places off of MacArthur Boulevard, including Glen Echo Park. And the last time, we used to take the kids to, to the theater. There's a little, there was a, they had plays. You know, children's plays and things like that. We used to take them there. It was a long time ago. But it's a. It's a treasure and there's not many places like it, especially in the Washington DC area. And I'm, I'm just. I'm excited, but also just so thrilled that. That we're paying attention to it and you know, there's, it's tired. I don't know what other word to use for it, but there's so much that could be done to that. We're on the track of doing with this plan that would enliven this space. It would make it. A sought after place to visit, especially for kids. That's my feeling. So it's, I mean, where else around here could you go, you know, take a 10, 15 minute drive and have, and have a carousel? You know, it's, I mean, it's lovely. So. Congratulations for getting this far and, and good hope for moving ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Green for your presentation as well. And the additional comments from Commissioner Stedman and Argo because it provided some more elucidation of, of the park and. Let's, it's very, very exciting and let's see if we can help facilitate some more ideal programming for those nine grandkids and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much and thank you for that clarification. Like I know, I'm not sure if we're supposed to pick favorites. But I think the alternative two is a really wonderful strategy. I think, given the fact that these yurts really aren't so being much being demolished and moved again. I think there's really no loss of bulk of the water of incidents. They're not getting demolished, putting it back on the truck and driving somewhere else. And I think, but I think that bridge is really huge. To me, that bridge is such an important feature with that connection to the parking lot. And to Clara Barton, it's just extraordinarily. And, and for those reasons, I personally think option two is really strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
Thank you all for the presentation and for the project. I would like to echo my fellow commissioners. This is such a treasure as a parent of a young child spent a lot of time at Glen Echo. Both in the theater and in the carousel and. The wonderful courses that are available for children and adults of all ages that are affordable. It's a huge resource for the community and so I really commend the effort to look at ways to, to expand that. I agree with Commissioner Green, particularly if you know, you're walking with young children and your stroller and not having to make that extra haul around to the single bridge. I think would be a hit, particularly when you're rushing to get there in time to get to the scene so they can see. Huge asset. The one thing I will say as you continue to look at, I, I too agree that. Alternative two, I think maybe gives you the most flexibility with what to do. As you continue to look at the buildable zones and I, I would encourage you to expand the thinking around what's happening on those sites. And maybe take it a step further to think some basic massing that might be appropriate if it is some, some sort of structure. And then I would ask the, the commission to, I think this would be worthy of site visit to get out there and really see. The impact of the massing on the views as you come in because it really is. A kind of discovery of these sweet little buildings and, and kind of the times past. And so I think it's important to retain that. So. I would add that to your comments, had otherwise.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
I echo and associate. As a, as a young person, I had a chance to go there when it was open for us to go finally. And I've had my grandchildren there, so I enjoy it. And hopefully you get more rides. So even at my age, I can go out and enjoy things. Always a child of heart, right? Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash.
No other comments, but thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Jacetti.
No comments either, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacetti. Commissioner Cozart.
Appreciate the presentation. No other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, thanks. Appreciate the presentation. Thanks to staff for the work and from National Park Service. I'll echo my support with the other comments, especially looking at that bridge. I think that's just a critical. Connection that's required to really unlock a lot of what can go on in Glen Echo. So regardless of option one or two, the bridge seems to be necessary, which. Drives you to think going to option two, which provides the most flexibility for Montgomery County and National Park Service for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McMahon. Yes. But you can, you can go.
Just had one other comment. Um, one of the things I think about when I think about Glen Echo is the kind of weird parking. That is, you know, there's, it's just a, you know, it's dirt and rocks and unpaved and, thank you, that's the correct word. And I'm, I'm not asking for any information about that, but just that it, that I'd like to know what the plan is for. If there are to be changes for parking, it's going to be expanded. There's not, I mean, there's, there's a reasonable amount. But what the plan would be for that parking facility, for that parking area. So no need to, to comment on it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that additional information. We appreciate it. I would just like to say thank you to the National Park Service for taking on the master planning. Responsibility for this historic place. I'm looking forward to seeing more built out because I'm hearing, you know, of all these grandchildren and children and I do think that. It's so important to have walkable areas where you can take kids in, in our environment in the current world that we live in with so much. Technology for kids. It's fun to get children outdoors and into an engaging space that includes arts and culture, but. Also, I think, you know, theater, but just nature in general. So I think this is a wonderful development. I look forward to. The master plan completing, you know, completing its, its trajectory and, and having, filling out more of this information about some of those developable spaces. I also.
And our tour.
Yes, we'll get to see the tour, take a pack of our lunch, okay? But I also want to say the transportation and parking is, I share that concern. I think that. You know, we want to make sure we can make it accessible, but also not disturb the neighborhood and make it logical. And that may not be possible within historic site. But I just want to second that suggestion. So thank you very much. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, can the secretary please confirm the motion in the second and take the roll?
Yes, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt and seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacetti?
Abstained.
Thank you. The motion is clearly passed. Again, thank you Stephanie and thank you Mark for your presentation. Agenda item six B is a request to approve the final site development plan for the Kennelworth Terrace Bridge. And Anacostia Avenue Bridge reconstruction. Michael Wild's going to be giving the presentation. Michael?
Thank you very much. Hello, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The National Park Service has submitted final site development plans on behalf of DDOT. To reconstruct two bridges in Anacostia Park, both of which are located in northeast Washington DC. Our commission previously reviewed the preliminary plans for this project back in June of 2022. Here are the two project sites located to the east of the Anacostia River. The first location is a bridge along Anacostia Avenue just to the north of Benning Road. And adjacent to the old Pepco Power Plant Site, Anacostia Park and close to the district's Waste Management Transfer Station. The second project location is along Kennelworth Terrace near I-295 and the Mayfair Parkside and Eastland Garden neighborhoods. Starting with the Kennelworth Terrace Bridge, the current structure is a single span, two lane bridge that crosses over Watts Branch. The bridge was originally constructed in the 1950s as a temporary single lane bridge. And DDOT widened the bridge in 1978 to accommodate two travel lanes. The bridge accommodates pedestrians and bicyclists with a six foot wide cantilevered wooden walkway. Along its west side as shown here in these ground view photos. Currently, the bridge is structurally deficient. The bridge does not meet current DDOT planning standards. And the stream bed adjacent to the bridge's south abutment has been eroded away over time. DDOT will reconstruct the bridge as a longer, wider, single span structure to accommodate two 12 foot wide travel lanes. And 10 foot wide sidewalks along each side of the roadway. And the new bridge will have a repositioned south abutment in order to improve the stream channel. And to mitigate the ongoing current erosion issue there. The new bridge is designed with real stone wing wall and abutment facades. And its underside superstructure girders will be painted park brown. To reflect its location on National Park Service property and to other bridges on federal parkland in the area. The second bridge site located along Anacostia Avenue is currently a three span structure. With two travel lanes and a very narrow, substandard, one and a half foot wide pedestrian walkway. The new bridge is designed as a shorter two span structure. But with a wider cross section that will accommodate two 12 foot wide traffic lanes and a separate 10 foot wide walkway along its east side. And the new bridge will have real stone facades and park brown painted under girders again to reflect its location on Park Service property. And other nearby bridges in the area. NCPC staff supports the project, which will improve multimodal travel access in the area. With new bridges that meet current DDOT standards and with designs that are compatible with our Anacostia Park setting. And we note our support in our final executive director's recommendation comments. In terms of landscaping, the project will meet our tree replacement ratios with native tree species. With an appropriate mix of pollinators and a planting palette that is mostly native. However, staff notes that two of the proposed bio swale plantings, the Bailey's Compact American Cranberry Bush. And Blue Zinger Blue Sedge are not native to the area. However, these are not invasive species, which is allowable per NCPC's pollinator guidelines. And DDOT frequently uses these species in other parts of the district as well. And one final note, while not a requirement, we would like to encourage DDOT to add swamp milkweed to the project's bio swale areas. As they work to finalize their construction documents. Finally, we did have one person who had signed up to testify on the project's landscaping at today's meeting. However, he has since withdrawn his testimony since he is satisfied with the applicant's clarifications. On their proposed planting palette selections. So with that brief summary, here is the executive director's recommendation and overall. NCPC staff does support this project and its goals. And DDOT representatives are here today to respond to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Do any commissioners online or in the chambers have questions for Michael or for the DDOT consultant? No questions? We're hearing no questions. Then is there a motion to approve the final site development plans? To, for the Kennelworth Terrace Bridge and the Anacostia Avenue Bridge reconstruction?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hewitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stidham. Thank you. Now I'm going to open the project up for discussion. And I'm going to begin with Commissioner Cozart.
Many thanks to the staff for your presentation and for colleagues at DDOT and others for working on this. No additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon.
No, great presentation. Thanks to the staff. Thanks to DDOT. I've got no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham.
Just the, these are important bridges to the community, not just for the safety of pedestrians, but also for traffic safety. And I just wanted to note that both of these bridges will be coming for a transfer of jurisdiction from the Park Service to the district. They were originally constructed by permits that was supposed to be transferred a really long time ago. It just didn't happen. So that transfers in the works and will be coming to this commission for approval.
Thank you for that additional information. Commissioner Argo.
I have no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt.
No additional comments. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Just thank the applicant for the quality of the project. No issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
No additional.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash.
Actually, just one quick question now because you piqued my interest there. So will DDOT be building this or will be, will be the Park Service?
DDOT will be building this.
So I'm hopeful that the real stone stays on there since otherwise it probably would have been formed stone had we had other budgetary concerns. So I appreciate the design element.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cash and Commissioner Jacetti. Commissioner Jacetti will hopefully be back soon. Okay. My comment is it's a great project. I think obviously these bridges are long overdue in, in terms of their need to be replaced. And once again, connecting to a dynamic neighborhood and providing options for residents. To, to connect to these assets that we have. Do you want to thank Mr. Byrne, I presume was involved in. Sharing his thoughts about this and working with staff and I want to thank staff for working with Mr. Byrne to make sure that. We're all in agreement on the, the landscape design and the contributing plant materials. So thank you there as well. Are there any further comments or questions? Further comments? Hearing none, then can the secretary please confirm the motion in the second and take the roll?
Yes, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt and seconded by Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item six C is a request to approve preliminary site development. Plans, development plans for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Off-Site Roadway Improvements and. Presentation will be made by Stephanie. Stephanie?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The US Army Corps of Engineers in coordination with the Bureau of Engraving and Printing, or BEP. Has submitted preliminary site development plans for off-site roadway improvements associated with the. Development of the new BEP Currency Production Facility in Beltsville, Maryland. The commission reviewed the final plans for the Currency Production Facility in October 2023. Today, we are reviewing the preliminary plans for improvements to the surrounding roadway network. Recommended as part of the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, and Traffic Impact Study. Completed as part of that project to mitigate traffic impacts resulting from the operations of the new facilities. And final review of the off-site roadway improvements is pending review this spring. You may recall that the BEP is relocating the Currency Production Facility from its current location in downtown Washington. To a new facility in Beltsville, Maryland at the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center. Here we have a rendering of the proposed Currency Production Facility, which is anticipated to begin occupancy in 2027. And will, will have full occupancy in 2030. A closer look here shows the surrounding roadway network that is considered as part of this proposal. The Currency Production Facility will be accessed from Powder Mill Road between Edmundston Road or MD 201. And the Baltimore, Washington Parkway or MD 295. The property required to implement the improvements on Edmundston and Powder Mill Roads. Is under the jurisdiction of the United States Department of Agriculture and for the Baltimore, Washington Parkway by the National Park Service. As such, BEP has coordinated with those agencies and the proposed improvements are limited to seven intersections on these roads as recommended by the Traffic Impact Study. Prepared for the CPF project. The proposed off-site roadway improvements include horizontal and vertical alignment, lane modifications, multimodal access features. And signal upgrades at the seven intersections identified in the EIS as needing improvements as indicated in red on the map here. During the project review of the Currency Production Facility, the applicant provided a high level analysis of the potential impact the traffic. the traffic mitigation will have on the air quality in the surrounding area and found that the proposed improvements will reduce vehicle emissions by approximately 27% compared to a no-build scenario. Staff finds the off-site roadway improvements are consistent with the recommendations of the EIS and Traffic Impact Study regarding air quality and traffic mitigation. The area to be improved where Powder Mill Road and the Baltimore-Washington Parkway intersect is shown here, with the limits of disturbance outlined in orange. This general area has several natural resources, including wetlands, streams, and mature forest. There are also a number of existing below- and above-grade utilities. As recommended by the Traffic Impact Study, the improvements include intersection enhancements and the associated stormwater management facilities. A strategy for tree preservation and replacement is also proposed. New traffic signals are proposed at the Powder Mill Road intersections at the termini of the Baltimore-Washington Parkway ramps and Springfield Road. In addition, modifications to lane geometry and pavement widening along Powder Mill Road are proposed to provide separate left and right turn lanes, which will separate traffic turning from through traffic, ensuring smoother traffic flow, and coordination of traffic signals will optimize efficiency. The applicant worked with the National Park Service to specify and locate 14 understory trees as replacement for two existing oak trees that will be removed along the Baltimore-Washington Parkway. Understory trees are specified to avoid conflicts with sightlines. Staff finds that pursuant to the comprehensive plan's tree replacement policies, normally seven large canopy trees would be required as replacement for the two oak trees removed. However, according to the Prince George's County Landscape Manual, the 14 understory trees proposed will provide an equivalent planting unit to the seven large canopy trees. Other proposed plantings in the area consist of turf grass along the edge of the roadway and bottom of stormwater management conveyance swales per Maryland Department of Transportation standards. Meadow plantings are also proposed for bio-retention areas, hillsides, and in upland areas. The meadow seed mixes were updated in consultation with staff following the initial submission to increase the ratio of wildflowers, including milkweed species, to native grasses to more closely align with the USDA's recommendations for grass-to-wildflower ratios and milkweed diversity as referenced in NCPC's Pollinators Best Practices Resource Guide. However, in some areas, a performance meadow specification approved by the Maryland Department of the Environment is required for permanent seeding. This mix includes higher rates of native grasses than referenced in the resource guide to address maintenance and erosion control issues. The existing conditions along Edmundston Road also consist of natural resources, mature forests, and a number of below- and above-grade utilities. Design improvements for Edmundston Road are aimed at improving traffic flow, safety, and multimodal accessibility. The primary focus of these improvements spans intersections and road segments from north of Powder Mill Road to south of Sunnyside Avenue with intersection and lane additions, traffic signal adjustments, stormwater management, bike and pedestrian accommodations, and tree preservation and replacement. At the Edmundston Road and Sunnyside Avenue intersection, the plans propose adding a second southbound-through lane and extending the northbound-through lane to improve intersection efficiency. Traffic signals at Edmundston Road intersections with Sunnyside Avenue and Powder Mill Road will also be reconstructed to align with new lanes with additional signal timing optimization to enhance signal efficiency and timing coordination across the widened intersections. In addition, turn lanes will be added at the intersection with Beaver Dam Road, including a southbound left-turn lane from Edmundston to Beaver Dam to help reduce congestion. A westbound right-turn lane on Beaver Dam Road is also proposed, enhancing flow for vehicles turning onto Edmundston Road. Additional turn lanes are also proposed for the Edmundston Road and Powder Mill Road intersection, including a northbound right-turn lane and a second westbound left-turn lane, as well as a second eastbound-through lane to enhance flow at this intersection. The existing free-flow right-turn lanes from Edmundston to Powder Mill Road will be replaced with hard right turns, which requires drivers to come to a complete stop at the signal. This adjustment aims to improve cyclist safety by reducing uncontrolled vehicle movements. The project will comply with the comprehensive plan's tree replacement ratio and the Maryland Forest Conservation Plan requirements for tree removal along Edmundston Road. The applicant is actively coordinating with federal, state, and local agencies to confirm the method for tree replacements, such as onsite replanting or via a forest conservation easement, or also options for off-site replanting. And this will be determined prior to final site plan review and approval. Through consultation with stakeholders, the applicant was able to reduce the amount of tree clearing in total on Edmundston Road by approximately half by locating the proposed stormwater management facilities on the east side of the road, which is a previously disturbed area. Also, in response to stakeholder feedback regarding bicycle traffic, a new six-foot bike lane will be striped on both sides of Edmundston Road within the shoulder from the southern project limit to Powder Mill Road. This will reduce the bike level of stress, of traffic stress, from the existing rating of high to a rating of medium for cyclists. In addition, Powder Mill Road will be marked as a shared vehicle-bicycle lane and will maintain the bike level of stress as medium. Staff finds that overall, the proposed improvements to accommodate cyclists on Edmundston and Powder Mill Roads will improve the bike level of stress within the project boundary without increasing the limits of disturbance, which may further impact adjacent natural resources. Staff referred the preliminary plans to the Maryland State Clearinghouse, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, and the City of Greenbelt for a 60-day comment period. Comments from the Clearinghouse were minor and shared with the applicant for their reference. The Prince George's County Planning Department submitted a letter of support for the proposed off-site roadway improvements, and the City of Greenbelt noted in its comments some concerns primarily related to bicycle infrastructure. As noted earlier, BEP's jurisdiction is limited to the improvements at the seven intersections as recommended by the EIS and Traffic Impact Study. Therefore, any additional work would need to be permitted by USDA and NPS as the landowners. NCPC staff notes that it will work with USDA and NPS regarding future master planning efforts for federal property in the project area to ensure coordination with Prince George's County transportation plans for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. And representatives from both the City of Greenbelt and Prince George's County Planning are present today to speak to their comments. So I have incorporated the executive director's recommendations into my presentation, so I will not repeat them here. They are also listed in the executive director's report. And myself, Matthew Brightenother, with the Army Corps of Engineers, and Chuck Davis with BEP are all available to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. We appreciate that thorough presentation. Do commissioners online or in person have any questions for Stephanie or for the consultants? Any questions? Hearing no questions then from the chambers, we will thank you and turn to our public testimony. We have three people signed up to speak today in person. One is Ryan Sigworth, who is attending in person. Would you like to begin, Ryan, please? You're testifying on behalf of the City of Greenbelt's Department of Planning and Community Development, and you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Please let us know when you're ready.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Thank you. For the record, my name is Ryan Sigworth. I'm a community planner with the City of Greenbelt. Speaking on behalf of the Greenbelt City Council, which has consistently opposed the relocation of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility, also known as the CFP, and continues to do so. The city borders on the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center and values the Bark as an integral part of Greenbelt's Green Belt. Despite the city's opposition, the Department of Treasury has made the decision to relocate the CFP to Bark. Therefore, these comments are offered in order to continue to improve the overall project in conformance with adopted master plans in Prince George's County. Fennage improvements are required for most construction projects within Prince George's County as identified in any of the applicable master plans. In the preliminary review of the off-site roadway improvements, the city has identified multiple instances of nonconformance with the Prince George's County 2009 Master Plan of Transportation. On Powder Mill Road, the Master Plan of Transportation recommends bike lanes from Maryland 201 to, I'm sorry, MD 201 to MD 197 on page 30, line 124 of that master plan. Yet the only fennage improvements currently proposed on this corridor are vehicular improvements at the entry point into and out of the BEP property. Furthermore, the project takes secondary access on Odell Road. And according to the 2009 Master Plan of Transportation, bike lanes are also recommended from Merkirk Road to Old Baltimore Pike, which is page 30, line 122 of the master plan. Yet no improvements are proposed on Odell Road. Additionally, the off-site roadway improvements proposed along Powder Mill Road would result in significant reconfigurations of the intersections at the on- and off-ramps onto the Baltimore-Washington Parkway. The Prince George's County 2009 Master Plan of Transportation recommends bike lanes on Powder Mill from MD 201 to MD 197. And the proposed plans within the area of improvement provide no bicycle infrastructure, nor do they reserve any space in the roadway cross-section for future installation of bicycle infrastructure. Finally, the city supports the inclusion of bike lanes along Edmundston Road as well as the removal of the existing slip lanes at the intersection of Edmundston Road and Powder Mill Road. However, the bike lane design is insufficient, given the roadway's traffic volumes and design speed of 40 miles an hour. Buffered bike lanes would be a more appropriate use here according to the National Association of City Transportation Officials, otherwise known as NACTO, as part of their Urban Bike Way Design Guide. These buffered bike lanes could be included in the design by reallocating space within the existing cross-section by narrowing travel lanes and the center median. I want to thank you for this opportunity to comment in an effort to continue and to improve the overall project and support the goals of the adopted master plans in Prince George's County and the concerns of the City of Greenbelt. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate it. Our second speaker will be Bobby Ray, attending online. And you're testifying on behalf of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County, and you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Let us know when you're ready.
All right. Thank you very much. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Chair Goodman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Bobby Ray, Planning Supervisor with Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission's Prince George's County Planning Department. On behalf of the Planning Department and the Prince George's County Planning Board, we would like to express our continued support for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility planned for Beltsville, Maryland. The Prince George's County Planning Board reviewed the concept site and building design on March 4th of 2021 and transmitted a set of recommendations to the commission. One of the recommendations was to allow for a second planning board review at 35% design, which was conducted by the Planning Board on February 2nd, 2023. In their February 2023 review, the Planning Board recommended that implementation of the Transportation Impact Study preliminary design be coordinated with all stakeholders to build consensus before a final design is adopted. In the Planning Commission's letter to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which is dated August 12th, 2024, the off-site roadway improvements were determined to be consistent with the current 2009 Master Plan of Transportation and the 2010 approved Subregion 1 Master Plan and sectional plan amendment. It was later clarified that while the exact recommendations of the Master Plan of Transportation are not implemented by the project, the intent of the improvements are consistent with the Master Plan of Transportation. Additionally, staff will continue to coordinate with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Bureau of Engineering and Printing, or excuse me, Bureau of Engraving and Printing, as the project moves forward. And as the Master Plan of Transportation is updated, we thank you for the opportunity to speak on the project, and we are available for any questions. And I know that we have several staff members who are physically present at the meeting this afternoon and also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray, and we appreciate the attendance here by other members, and thank you for participating and providing input. And our last contributor today is Mr. Bernard Byrne, and he is online. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony, Mr. Byrne. Could you please let us know when you're ready?
Yes, I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
A document in this submission states that the applicant will permanently establish turf grass sod in the bottoms and sides of the project's stormwater management swales. However, turf grasses are wind-pollinated. They do not support pollinators as well as flowering nectar plants do. Further, many turf grasses are not native to North America and are highly invasive. For example, tall fescues, perennial ryegrass, and Kentucky bluegrass. These are devastated areas in the Midwest, particularly where those grasslands. But they also are very invasive right here. The applicant should therefore install in the swales the butterfly and hummingbird garden mix that it plans to place in other parts of the site. This mix contains a cover grass crop of annual ryegrass. Annual ryegrass will sufficiently prevent the swale's erosion when combined with the milkweeds that the applicant plans to add to that mix. Apparently, it seems that the applicant did not wish to use that mix because of the erosion problem, but this is really not a problem. The mix's manufacturer states that the annual ryegrass provides quick protection against soil, wind, and water erosion. It is used as a companion or cover crop where erosion is an immediate concern. The plant frequently receives itself in disturbed areas. Although not native to North America and somewhat invasive, while annual ryegrass has not been found outside of conservation in the mid-Atlantic and northeastern United States, it is far less invasive than many of the grasses that the usual turf mixes contain. For all of these reasons, the applicant should install this swales, the butterfly and hummingbird mix that it plans to place in other parts of the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Now, are there any questions for the witnesses today, for Stephanie or for Mr. Ryan Sigworth, who spoke on behalf of the City of Greenbelt's Planning and Community Development Department? Mr. Bobby Ray, on behalf of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission? Or Mr. Bernard Byrne, who advocates on behalf of Pollinators? Are there questions for any of the speakers today from the commission? Any questions? Hearing none, we're going to move on, but we do want to thank all of you who participated today in your public presentation, and thank you, Stephanie, for the presentation. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary site development plans for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing off-site roadway improvements?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the preliminary site development plans.
Thank you. That is Vice Chair Hewlett has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Argo. And now we will open it up to the commission for discussion. And I'd like to start with Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation from staff. Good presentation as always, and also the hard work on all the project sponsors to bring us to this point today. Certainly, we can all wish some of the facilities were better improved. I'm a cyclist. I understand some of that, but I think what they've done here is a good compromise that will support BEP and PG's County's ongoing efforts to improve non-car transportation facilities in the area. So I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham.
Thank you for the presentation. We just would like to say thank you to the applicant for their coordination with us through this project and look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewlett.
Yes, first, I'd like to thank Ms. Free for your presentation. I'd like to thank the applicant for hearing and really working to incorporate the stakeholders' concerns and addressing them. So I really appreciate that. I'd like to thank Mr. Ryan and Mayor Jordan and the City of Greenbelt for their comments in their January 15th letter and today's testimony as well. And one of the things that they addressed in the letter is location, but as you know, that's not something for consideration here, so we, that's a done deal in terms of the establishment of the location. I'd like to thank Mr. Ray and Mr. Hancock and Ms. Ose and Mr. Hunt and who are all here today, or who are present today. And I'd like to mention, the City of Greenbelt has commented the inconsistencies with the Master Plan of Transportation and with Subregion 1. And I know that in the letter that you have submitted and that the Planning Department has considered and that the Planning Commission has voted on, it is consistent with at least the intent of the Master Plan of Transportation. But I just want to make sure that we continue to follow. This is a preliminary approval of the road improvements, and so I just want to make sure that we continue to follow up on that as well and continue to work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. No additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
Yes, I would like to commend the applicant on the improvements they've made so far based on community comments on the improvements to the bike lane and the tree retention. That's a huge. The improvements to the bike lane and the tree retention, that's a huge component. So I do hear the Soviet Green Belt, and I encourage the applicant, as they continue to develop the project, to evaluate whether the buffered bike lanes are indeed feasible or not. I know that requires some roadway restrictions and shrinkage of the median, but worth looking into.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall-Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
Go and associate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash.
I really want to thank the City of Greenbelt for their comments on this. I think that there are some we can't relitigate this whole thing. I do very much commiserate as the city council representative here for when you have the federal government coming in and doing something that is probably not the best thing, but you do the best you can to mitigate those negative effects. And I hope as the project continues to move forward that you can maybe mitigate more of the tree removals. We know that's very important here and the other negative effects that this is going to cause. But thanks for the improvements that have gone into the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Cozart.
I'll associate myself with the comments of Commissioner Tunstall-Williams and thank the staff for your presentation. No additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. I too want to thank staff, and I also want to thank all those who came today to speak about and provide input on this influence project. I also want to echo comments already made by our fellow commissioners, and I do appreciate the efforts that have been made to improve the project. It is yet a preliminary approval today. And so I hope that the participants and the stakeholders continue to work together to make this the best project it can be, given the fact that it is a federal project in the outskirts of a small town. So thank you all for the work that you're doing, and we look forward to continuing that work with you. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, can the secretary confirm the motion and the second and take the vote, please?
Yes, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt and seconded by Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall-Williams? Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. And we are now going to move to our two information presentations. Agenda Item 7A is an information presentation on the Capital One Arena improvements. And Jamie Herr will be making the presentation there. Thank you, Jamie. Hi. We're waiting for the people behind the curtain.
We are.
Pull up our
I could do a dance, but I don't know. Embarrass myself.
And there, I just want to take this moment to say thank you to all those behind-the-scenes IT staff who support our work. So Tony, thank you. Thank you, your staff. Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. Representatives from the District of Columbia, Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development, and Monumental Sports and Entertainment are here today to provide the commission with an information overview of the planned improvements to the Capital One Arena. Capital One Arena is located in northwest Washington, DC. The site encompasses the blocks bounded by F Street Northwest to the south, Seventh Street Northwest to the west, Sixth Street Northwest to the east, and commercial buildings to the north. Next slide. Don't have it. One back. Thank you. Capital One Arena was approved by the commission in 1995 and opened to the public in 1997. The commission has review authority over the project as a district project in the central area. In addition, the commission has both a National Environmental Policy Act and National Historic Preservation Act responsibility for the building. The building is within the downtown historic district and adjacent to historic federal buildings, including the Donald W. Reynolds Center for American Art and Portraiture, which is administered by the Smithsonian Institution, and the General Post Office, now the home of the Kimpton Monaco Hotel, through a lease with the General Services Administration. Excellent. The arena pictured here at the main corner of Seventh and F Streets Northwest has a seating capacity of just over twenty thousand and includes an entrance to the Metro Rail system at the Gallery Place Chinatown Station. The district initiated the Gallery Place Chinatown Task Force in 2024 to reimagine the future of the area around the arena and has been coordinating with the applicant on this vision, which you will hear more about coming up. In December, the District of Columbia entered into an agreement with Monumental Sports and Entertainment to purchase the building from the owner and lease it back to them. The project will upgrade the interior and exterior of the facility, and construction is expected to happen in multiple phases due to the limited time available to close the facility each year, but will be completed by the start of the 2027-28 season. The applicant has indicated that they plan to submit the initial preliminary review for the exterior changes in the spring. Now I will turn it over to Leah Riley from the DC Office of the Mayor for Planning and Economic Development to provide some area context and information on the Chinatown Task Force. After that, representatives from Monumental Sports and Entertainment and their design team will give the commission an overview of the current design concept.
Thanks. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I'm Leah Riley. I'm the Director of Downtown Innovation at DEMPED. So I'm going to talk to you a little, set a little context for you today about how the redevelopment of the arena is going to help with our downtown revitalization and the comeback of our engine of our economy. Next slide. So I wanted to start with the Lawn Font Plan. The arena sits squarely in the heart of the original Lawn Font Plan. So I thought it was good to do a little history setting here. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that where the Portrait Gallery is, which is immediately across the street from the arena, was literally the heart of the city in the Lawn Font Plan. And Lawn Font had called out for the site around that Portrait Gallery to be a very important urban public space and literally creating the heart of the city. And so even though we have this very important building that sits there right now, which is the Portrait Gallery, the public space around it has yet to be realized. Next slide. A little bit about Gallery Place Chinatown. This is a It has been known for a really great economic vitality. Spur a lot happening, which of course will help the rest of the city. The sort of like four corners around the arena are the National Mall, Union Station, the Convention Center, and the White House. Those areas combined have millions of visitors that we can pull into the area with some very intentional interventions. And Chinatown itself, of course, has a very unique appeal, very strong cultural heritage, a very vibrant history. And we see, of course, a much more potential for growth there through thoughtful investments and interventions. Next slide. So this is a rendering that is being produced as part of the Gallery Place Chinatown Task Force that was mentioned previously. This group came together to come up with recommendations for the city about how to revitalize the area, even after the teams were staying, recognizing that a lot of interventions were needed. It can really create a very vibrant economy. So here you see, again, the Portrait Gallery, which is the heart of the city, and showing how the arena right across from it is going to play a very important role in revitalizing the neighborhood. So it helps to find the square on the eastern edge, and also it's going to provide near daily opportunities for urban vitality and economic activity. Next slide, please. So this is a rendering of what the task force is envisioning will happen at the Portrait Gallery, which is going to tie into the arena. So the idea is that we're going to create a great space in our city similar to an urban piazza. So it's trying to build on, we have beautiful green spaces here, but we don't have a public space that's an urban center for us. So this is F Street looking east in front of the Portrait Gallery. And so that's the top. The current condition below is what our design intention is. And so you can see that what we are hoping to do is to create curbless streets from Seventh to Ninth to really open that up and also, I'm sorry, on F from Sixth to Ninth around, that goes in front of the arena, I'm sorry, and the Portrait Gallery. We're also thinking about doing it on Seventh and then it's G, so it would make this piazza around it. But what it really means is it's tying these two spaces together in the outside realm. Go ahead, next slide. Additionally, the redevelopment of the arena is also critically tied to two plans that already exist in the district. So in, we have the down, I'm sorry, the DC Comeback Plan, which is the five-year economic strategy for the city, spawned these two other plans that are supporting its implementation. So one is the Downtown Public Realm Plan that has been led by the Office of Planning, and it has a framework for four catalytic projects that'll transform some downtown streets and public spaces. And the second is the Downtown Action Plan, which has been led by the Downtown DC and Golden Triangle bids. This is a document that outlines the economic development strategy for different nodes and neighborhoods in the downtown area. Next slide. So this is a summary of the projects that are outlined in the Public Realm Plan. And if you can see here down to the bottom right in the pink, one of the prominent projects is the Gallery Place Festival Plaza, and it's largely what I just described to you that's coming out of the task force. Next slide. So in the Public Realm Plan, the Gallery Place Festival Plaza was really envisioning the area becoming a cultural center, focused on the National Portrait Gallery, focused on Capital One Arena and the Martin Luther King Library, these various three strong cultural assets being stitched together, becoming a public life magnet, lots of activity throughout, and of course, economic development spurs from that. Next slide, please. And this is just an even more granular drawing idea of what could happen around the Portrait Gallery. As you can see, F Street, right there in front of the Portrait Gallery, it would keep going across in front of the arena. The idea is to actually have this pedestrian, human-scale environment going all the way around the Portrait Gallery, so it would be very tied into the arena. And then also, the Downtown Action Plan has very specific goals about how we can revitalize our economy. One of those goals is to increase visitation. So we believe that the redevelopment of the Capital One Arena, especially with the new amenities that are going to be built both inside and outside of the arena, are going to increase visitation to the area. Obviously, revitalizing the economy is one of the goals. We recently had an analysis done by RC Elko where they've told us that they have determined that the redevelopment of the Capital One Arena is going to generate an additional forty million dollars in local fund revenue annually. Also, activating vacant retail spaces. So the arena has the ability to support creating a vibrant urban space that will, with human-scale amenities, and that draws people and foot traffic throughout the year. Those things in turn spur economic development. And also, the last goal that really ties into this project is solidifying the Gallery Place Chinatown neighborhood as an entertainment and cultural hub. And as you can see, that's a theme through the task force, through the Public Realm Plan, and now in the Downtown Action Plan. So taking these major anchor institutions and creating a very strong heart of the region. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leah, and thank you as well, Jamie. And we have another speaker now. Could you identify yourself, please?
I will. Monica Dixon. I'm with Monumental Sports and Entertainment, and I'm very happy to be here today. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Leah, for the inspirational presentation of the new Gallery Square that is at the historic heart of our city. On behalf of Monumental Sports, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share plans for delivering a brand-new downtown arena in the district and to talk about where monuments meet momentum, our tagline for this project, which we believe will enhance and complement the historic district of our neighborhood in the best possible ways. With this transformation, we are building something bold and full of life, something that is now but envisions the future. Our architectural partners at Gunsler have created a vision worthy of this grand capital city. They have been intentional in capturing the power of place and using architecture to create indelible collective experiences, triggering powerful memories and making new ones. Capital One Arena hosts 220 events annually with a capacity of twenty thousand seats, and it's been operational since 1997. That's an extraordinary number of memories that have been created, and we cannot wait for the hundreds of millions of more memories that will be created in the next twenty-five years. The utility of this project should not be overlooked as it will resolve critical pain points of the existing design, including access. Gunsler will explain next this in more details, but the project improves the fan experience at the very outset by their entrance to the facility. This project incorporates a fully ADA-compliant entrance on Sixth Street, which is something that is lacking today. It also eases entry into the arena by both a new entry on F Street and an improved entrance from Gallery Place Way. The architectural redesign visually transforms the arena into a dynamic and monumental gathering location, honoring its role as the central meeting place within this historic plan of Washington, while also celebrating its identity as an arena. As you will see in a moment, the new design draws inspiration from the neighboring Reynolds Center, creating a dynamic architectural form that wraps the arena and enhances the building's identity. In doing so, the design welcomes fans in, guiding them through the entries and connecting with the urban fabric of the district. While the exterior changes will be most visible, the project will also reimagine the interior of the arena, creating new and exciting experiences for all those who use the building. The new design prioritizes inclusivity and a superior fan experience. The arena will be a marvel of modern design and technology, the intersection of style and comfort, a futuristic and first-class fan experience from the street to their seats. We applaud the mayor and her Gallery Place Task Force for sparking the very serious discussion of how to reinvigorate this part of downtown, which happens to be the very same part that led the rebirth of downtown in the 1990s. Through these efforts, the Gallery Place neighborhood will once again be vibrant, inclusive, mixed-use cultural destination in the very heart of the nation's capital, where residents and people from across the region, country, and the world will come together to collaborate, celebrate, and share their stories, just as Lawn Font intended. The new Capital One Arena will play a significant role in fostering those meaningful connections and bringing year-round renewed energy to the heart of a revitalized downtown. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Monica.
I'm down, inviting Gunsler up to provide the PowerPoint.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing? Next slide, if you could. I'm just going to very quickly take you through the transformation. I'll go to highlight some of the existing conditions and some of the pain points that Monica had just highlighted in her speech, talk through the exterior transformation a bit, and then our lighting strategies, because I think that that is something bit, and then our lighting strategies, because I think that that is something that will be of interest to the city. So please, go on, one more. So the exit, next slide. So I think we just saw this image earlier, so very familiar with it, but through these, go ahead, go ahead, it's fine. The existing conditions here, things to note, there's lots of projections on the building, but in total, the arena is a kind of a conflagration of all of these pieces kind of shoved together, trying to, very hard to blend in, not doing a great job of it, but it's a series of disparate kind of facades rammed together around an arena, and it really hides its identity as a gathering place and something that is meant to bring people together and be full of life and, you know, this memory maker. Next slide. And kind of things to highlight, you know, even in the glass and the opportunities that it took to, you know, create urban context, the glass is very dark and doesn't actually showcase the transparency that would, I think, bring the vibrancy that we are trying to project out into the facade. So we're going to take moments to correct that. Then the entry experience itself, trying to get people into the building faster and get them out back onto the street quicker is a primary focus. If you go to the next slide. One more, please. So the boundary, project boundary here is the arena itself. I think we, Jamie had highlighted between 7th, 6th, F, and the Gallery Place Way. Next slide. The, so these diagrams, again, I think, are, kind of tell the story of what we're trying to accomplish, but on the left there is the disparate facades of the building. The main entry is in the middle of F Street and kind of tucked down and has a portico that kind of interferes visually to the portico of the Portrait Gallery when you look at it down the street. And what we are trying to do is repurpose those entries, create a 1B-1A scenario where the F Street entrance has a more prominent presence at the corner and sort of announces itself so that it's not kind of far away. We'd like to do that, you know, to, you know, highlight that the front door is open, we're open for business, projecting that outward. And then people that arrive by car that will have the Gallery Place entry, Gallery Place is going to be, you know, kind of interior transformation to really bring that arena feel out into the, into what we're calling the Grand Pavilion. But the Gallery Place Way on 7th Street is going to be amped up to kind of draw people in a bit closer. And then lastly, taking inspiration from the Portrait Gallery itself, if you were to flip the atrium kind of inside-out is our idea, that, you know, wrap this unifying veil to make it, instead of being several disparate pieces, that we're wrapping it all together to be one thing. Next slide, please. So the, again, the inspiration here, the Portrait Gallery, the diagram there informed a lot of our architectural moves, but two other buildings that have a similar contextual relationship or, you know, were piece of inspiration, the African-American History and Culture Museum on the Mall, the idea of the scrim and kind of the unified, like, one shape, and then the United States Institute of Peace, you know, I drive by that building every day, so it might have informed things subconsciously, but, you know, the topping of the building on the kind of limestone base. So next slide, please. We really want to get the new materials of reskinning the building to be very closely aligned with the Portrait Gallery. So instead of the yellow brick and the precast panels and, again, this kind of overly ambitious decorate and decorative elements that I think don't really blend in, we're trying to hone that down to be limestone, we found a limestone brick, actual limestone, but it's modular so that we can lay it like brick. We have metal panels and then that will relate in color so that it has a seamless blend, so that's very similar to what happened at City Center, right around the corner, so give you an idea of what, you know, that look would be. And then the glass and kind of wood panels, the glass is meant to be more transparent, and that wood is to bring these warm tones so that the building doesn't feel cold, right? We want to use wood strategically, and it's going to be used on the interior a lot to, again, to warm up the, warm up the presence of the building. And lastly, the ETFE, the panels, the veil, as we call it, unifies the structure. So next slide, again, this is what it looks like today, next slide, and to be transformed into this. So the new entry highlighted there on F Street, you can see a big, tall, very transparent glazing system to draw people in, pull the eye in, pull the awning back significantly from where it projects out now at the middle of F Street. So the awning there is only really to protect the vestibule and as people are walking in. We've pushed out the metro station to give it more prominence, to better light it and make it feel safer, and again, having that public sphere influence on here to make it feel like a place that you want to arrive, you know, that it's going to connect with the task force's goals for Gallery Square. This is going to be a central arrival space, so it needs to have a little bit more oomph behind it than it currently does. Right now, it just feels like a hole in the wall, so we are trying to amp that up. At the base of the building, you can see a kind of mirrored finish on the wall. That is intended to be a public art piece that will evolve. We have spoken to the neighbors about how that could, you know, better influence and be, again, part of this, you know, this ever-changing piece, piece of art for the public. Next slide, please. This is the opposite corner at 6th and F, again, highlighting the transparency, we want to project that activation. So what are currently back-of-house office spaces that don't light up on event night, right? When there's a game going on, those spaces go dark, because that's the offices, and, you know, the people that are working there are now in the bowl either or at home. So this is going to become new hospitality space, and we want to project that by using more transparent glazing, putting rails at the glass. We're going to get more of that activation, again, vibrancy throughout the event, so people can see it. Same thing down on the street level, so that that corner holds a lot of prominence. The veil starts to turn the corner here and ends so that the massing starts to readjust itself to the smaller buildings across the street. Next slide. Up on Gallery Place Way, the building, the relocation of the LED screen, it's sort of sits up higher and left, it's kind of off-center in the building. We're refocusing that to be centered with G Street, again, with the task force ideas of this being more of a gathering space, a public gathering space, it's going to be more located, you know, centrally on the plaza so that it functions better as a, you know, out-of-home watching party for when the Caps are in the Stanley Cup. And then the, so the same thing with the Wizards in the finals, I'll talk on what again. And then the glazing there, bringing it down. What's that? It's coming, though. Lot of trades today. There were, but breaking down the massing of 7th Street here so that the walk on the street doesn't feel like you're covered under a long, very, you know, white facade. And lastly, the veil starts to turn around in Gallery Place Way and peel away from the building to create a protected covering. Next slide. So the programming for this alleyway is not changing except for the fact that Smoothie King is being removed, the Smoothie King kiosk that's there, and the facade of Gallery Place Pavilion is moving closer to the street by about 50 feet, and that's to get people in, into the, into the structure more efficiently, and also give more circulation space so that that interior space feels like it's part of the arena will be used on event nights. Next slide, please. On the opposite side, on 6th Street, so you can see the massing starts to break down and adjust to the neighbors across the street. This is the accessible entry that Monica had highlighted. This will bring people, bring guests in and connect to multiple levels of the venue so that the byway drop-off there will be used for, hopefully, a more inclusive purpose to bring people into the building sooner, connect them to an elevator, move up or down depending on their ticket type. Next slide. Talking through lighting strategies, one more. So the arena right now doesn't turn on as much as I think it should. It has, you know, again, very subdued lighting, it has some uplighting on the facade of the building, but it's not really a very, you know, fun-looking structure. It looks like an office building trying to dress up as an arena, and what happens here currently is that the marquees underneath the awning are the only thing that light up and kind of announce that there's an event going on, and you notice the queuing barging out into the street. F Street has to get closed down to make this, to make this work. So next slide. Our intention here, again, with the relocation, the entry will bring people in sooner. You won't, and the internal interior of the building currently, you walk right into, and the crowds are bifurcated by the three-bank elevator, so it splits the population, people run into each other, it's a mess. By moving it closer here, it's going to be a straight shot to the concourse and allow the population to very quickly get to their seats, so this will bring people in faster. But the lighting strategy for the veil is one of, more of a soft glow, right? We don't want this, so when I talk about the, you know, being turned on, it's more like a nightlight than it is a television on in the, television on in the bedroom, that the panels will be reflecting light in, of themselves rather than projecting outward. So there won't be a light on the, on the veil itself pushing out, it will light the veil, and then the veil will kind of, you know, lens the light. So if you look at it in terms of three examples from a global, local, and adjacent perspective, next slide, is Allianz Arena in Munich, Germany. It's a similar material that, you can see the panels, again, capture the light and kind of blend it, it's very soft. At the Kennedy Center, similar ideas employed, where the colored lights for cultural kind of messaging reflect off the marble and then out into the street, so it has a very nice smooth blend. If you drive by it at night, it has, again, it's not, it's not overly projection. Then across the street at the Portrait Gallery, they project onto the facade for messaging and for art reasons, most recently, I think they were burgundy and gold for. Last slide. The image is going, so happy to take any questions.
Very cool. Well, thank you, excuse me, very much, Andrew.
Yep.
And we appreciate your input and also comments from Lea, Monica, and Jamie. Are there any questions for our speakers from the commission, commissioners in the chamber?
Could you talk a little bit more about the shape of this roof? Like, what is it coming from? What, I get the materiality and its association with the courtyard at the Portrait Gallery, but the rest of it seems foreign, which in some ways is appropriate, but it also seems arbitrary, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about it.
Which parts? Well, the, yeah.
This part of it.
Okay. Yeah, so really, you know, it's trying to capture the idea of movement, that the structure, we have an overarching idea of confluence, and that's really taken from the idea of this being a meeting place and capturing the forces that move throughout the, move throughout and around the building, so even the, like, the cars highlighted in the rendering are blurred because they're intended to be motion. We can't make the structure kinetic itself, but this idea that it has, captures this idea of confluence, of bringing uses and people together, lots of people from lots of different places, all to the same spot for an event. So it's meant to project out that idea that it's about activation and excitement more than anything else.
Thank you. Additional question? Is there?
Yeah, first of all, very creative, I think. The space in front of the, in front, is that going to be closed now and just walk space or is it going, the street going to be closed off?
F Street?
Yes.
Yeah, the intention is that the building functions, functions the same way today that it is a will in the renovation.
Because F Street was closed at one time before, I think.
It's closed on game night.
It's closed on game nights now, yeah.
Historically, it was closed, it was a, it was actually closed at one point, I think, but that was a year ago, I believe.
I'm.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I don't tell you what my preferences are so that I don't.
The next block over.
The block in front of the Portrait Gallery.
That's right. It was in front of Portrait Gallery, it's closed.
I'll say that, given the constraints we have with the development, with the timeframe, because we have to work around the sporting events, our focus now is the building, and so that's what we have before you here. We are working on the public space improvements as well, as you heard, DC has the task force working on that, so we're coordinating with them, and so right now, we are focusing on the building, giving those constraints, but understand that there are public space items, there may be an interim period where we continue the existing public space improvements. We just are looking to marry up our improvements with the task force.
I understand.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, thank you. Christine Roddy with Goldstein Stores.
The building itself, this new effort, is it going to be functional or just a covering? Is it going to be more space created and is that space usable in any way?
No, not, not because of the veil itself, but there are some adjustments to the envelope, so the glass that's there on 7th Street is, currently sits behind columns.
Right.
But we are moving that out to create more functional space. Circulation is difficult in the arena for those who've used it, the concourses get very tight at the end, at the end lines.
Yes.
So this is an effort to grab a few feet to make circulation better, but because of the veil itself, no more functional space or GFAs being added to the, to the structure.
The roof is, is there any interest in maybe putting any kind of solar panel on top of the roof?
We investigated it thoroughly, it was, it was a, it was a primary goal from the outset, but because of functional restrictions, i.e. that adding weight to the roof, the roof structurally is maxed out for capacity for show loading, and shows are only getting bigger, any additional weight added to the roof will limit the ability to function. And it's, yeah, it was a strong.
Jordan Silverman, I'm president of venues for Monumental Sports, thanks for everyone's time today. I think the point that Andrew was trying to get to is the fact that we host concerts at our arena, and everything is hung from the roof, and we have a limited capacity of our roof to be able to host these concerts at the building and host these events, and all the shows that are going out on tour are only continuing to grow in size. So while we do want to add solar to the roof, it's something that we've tried to be creative about, we can't do that without limiting what we're going to be able to do in terms of bringing events to the arena.
I see. Okay, because I know that solar is becoming lighter and lighter, it's even filmed in some cases, but I'm sure you've explored that.
We have.
I'm sure. Second, you're not going to do anything, there's nothing going to happen inside in terms of the scene, et cetera.
There's, we're going to make a lot, we're making a lot of improvements inside the building, but our focus with you guys today is.
Okay. Because my company put the seats in there.
They did.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Okay. Thank you. Are there additional questions for our guests today or for Jamie?
I need just a follow-up on the solar. Did you explore green roof?
That's the weight, too.
The weight there, too.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes, very much. It was, there was an idea that was explored fairly in-depth, getting into structural analysis, and couldn't make it work, the, just the weight of the green roof and even making it, making the roof usable was very, very thoroughly explained.
Any additional questions?
Just to get more context on the green roof, because of the shape of the bell roof and where we have to maintain the rigging capacity, we have very limited space to put all of our HVAC equipment on the roof, and that is where the green roof would typically go. So we did explore, you know, options that were cantilevering the building to create more green space, but then it creates more viewshed issues and challenges that we wanted, we wanted to make sure we were limiting the impact in the neighborhood, so I think we were, you know, it's kind of the lesser of two evils at that point.
I would just add, as you continue to refine the design, to think about other things like that.
Of course.
That might help them get to the Stanley Cup, as we all hope they will.
Well, I think the thing that has guaranteed us at the Stanley Cup this year is the fact that we're starting a renovation and.
It's true. It's very hopeful, yes.
Thank you, Jordan. Any other questions from the commission online or, yes?
So I don't know that it was explicitly stated, but I was wondering if we could talk a little bit more about how it is you were able to free up more of that space with moving, you said you were moving the offices out, where are those offices moving to, and what's kind of the intersection with that and some of the revitalization stuff that we were talking about?
Yeah, so a lot of what we are creating inside, right now, we are, our offices are seated inside Capital One Arena, a lot of back-of-house support space. We're taking close to 500,000 square feet when, at the end of the day, here, inside the adjoining building, Gallery Place, that the atrium experience that Andrew was talking about. So we will move our back-of-house support spaces that are bowl-adjacent and then turn those spaces into hospitality, premium spaces, new retail opportunities. We will, we will move all of our offices that are on the first, second, and third and fourth floors of the building and move those into office spaces within Gallery Place above the movie theaters, and then creating a new kind of conference center, retail space in Gallery Place as well. So all of the space that was kind of back-of-house and company-serving in the past is going to be more fan-focused and retail-focused moving forward, so hoping to drive more economic development, drive more revenue, and hopefully more tax dollars. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? From the commissioners? Okay, well, thank you very much again for all this input. It's very exciting. And we're now going to move on to discussion by the, Jamie, if you're finished, I'm sorry. Are you finished?
I am finished.
Okay, that wasn't me.
I have no control over what's happening to the screen.
We're looking longingly at that slide and I thought, gosh, maybe there's more. It's very exciting. Thank you. Well, we'll just move on then for discussion and I'd like to begin with Commissioner Cash.
Well, I think this is a really exciting project. Unlike the Bureau of Engraving and Printing, I think this is the exact right project in the exact right place. So I really appreciate the the work that went in with all the negotiating to to keep Monumental in the arena and district. I do want to emphasize because I I kind of knew the answer to that question about the this office space. But I think it's really important because with everything that's gone on downtown, Gallery Place, where the bowling alley and the movie theater and all that stuff. I mean, everything is really depressed there. And I think there's a really unique opportunity. The city was able to help Monumental out and utilizing that space, which has now been underutilized and empty and free up more space in the actual arenas that we can actually fit a new modern arena that can do all this great stuff in in its same home with some really creative moves around in the programming. I also want to say I did see some initial renderings of this many, many months ago and it kind of, it it shocked me at first, but it's really, really growing on me. So I I know that this is the first time a lot of folks are seeing it. It's only been out in the media for a while. But I mean, it is really, I think that the the designs have really come forward even from from what I saw earlier. And it's, I think that the information about the materiality of the building itself, like where we're going to get away from these six or seven different cubes that were set up, I think that's actually going to do a lot to rightsize the scale of all this down there. And I'll just note that that I think one of the big sticking points back in the 90s, when this was all before NCPC before, it was some of this this question about the massing and scaling. I think that might have had an effect on how the building is right now. So this is really a rebirth of it and and kind of understanding the importance of the arenas to downtown and then kind of doing the opposite. We're trying to upplay its importance rather than downplay it. So I think this is a really exciting project and I thank everyone that presented today for bringing it to us.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Jacati, are you with us or is he?
He has to step away.
He had to step away. Okay. Commissioner Cozart.
I want to thank my colleagues at DEMPED for their work on this and setting the context. And it's so very important. I want to underscore how important this project is for a key part of downtown revitalization, which is bringing more people, right? If you compare places like Madrid or Paris and their kind of equivalent areas, you know, they have 100 people per acre. They have 75 people per acre. This area has 35. And certainly there's room to grow. And by having a magnet like this that is so attractive and thought provoking and provocative and creates an opportunity, as Monica was sharing, for more memories, that really helps us realize kind of the growth and opportunity for wealth. And and so I'm really excited about this. I really appreciate the the presentation from Monumental and Gensler. And, you know, maybe the best is is yet to come. There's more for us to do, certainly. But really impressive work, impressive iterating over this. And in many ways, it's exciting to think about kind of this part of Washington growing up a little bit and growing out of the office boxy kind of feel into having much more dynamism represented in our area, even in a place that has such a rich history of architecture. So very excited and look forward to what's next.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon.
No, thanks. I appreciate the opportunity to hear some of the visioning for both the city, for Gallery Place in general, and from Monumental about and Gensler about what I used to call the phone, but phone box in particular, and certainly looking forward to seeing him come back and see how this project develops. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham.
It is really nice to see this. You've been hearing a lot about it. So seeing the changes are really great. Just cleaning up the facade is such a huge change. I mean, so huge. You don't have me on the roof structure yet. It's definitely a signature building and will draw attention. But really nice work and I look forward to seeing more.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
I like that signature building. I like that. No, I like that. That's that's exactly what it could become. That's a good way of putting it. It's exciting. I'm a huge Caps fan, but I lost my free tickets when somebody went off the city council, whose name I will not reveal. And so I haven't been there in a while. Let's do it this way. But there's so much that could be done to improve what's there. And so this is really exciting, you know, just in terms of, yeah, becoming a signature. You know, outpost for for visitors, for those of us who love our athletic teams and look forward to seeing the progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner or Vice Chair Hewitt.
Yeah, thank you. This is so exciting. I love to come to the Capital One Arena now even. And I live in Prince George's County and I just simply take the metro there. And so it's it's just wonderful. I come for the games. I come for concerts and things like that. And but it but in juxtaposing what it is now versus the plans that you have for the future is just phenomenal. And it's just, it opens it up and creates a destination place that's going to be so much fun to come to and promotes community. And and the fact that it's so accessible by metro, which is right there, is just, it just enhances the whole project. It's just wonderful. Thank you. I'm so excited.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, you know, I think this building points out one of the great problems of 1990s. It's going to look like cell buildings and it's going to fool everyone. It never were. And so I like, I want to go back from your earlier diagrams, the original diagram showed that ribbon kind of coming around it. And I think that was almost the more effective analogy, sort of wrapping it in that ribbon. Because I think to the degree that the ribbon moved up and out and tried to become a veil, it's less successful at making the building one thing. And it needs to be one building and both buildings make their own context. They don't have to respond, you know, moment by moment to things going on around them. And I think there's still elements of this one that's trying to do that. And I think to the extent that it can become itself, that creates context. And and I think, again, using, because I think even with the aerial view, when you see that veil or the corona, it does have that element of uplift. But I think it's a little different. When you see it from the ground, you see the parts that are reaching down. And I think there's still a little bit of tension in there, but I think, but it's, I like the moves. And I like, I think, I think using that ribbon analogy from the beginning, I think has a lot of power in it still. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
I would like to associate my comments with Commissioner Green here. 100%. I think this is a really exciting project. I think it's what the city needs in this location. I like the idea of of a kind of it becoming a beacon. I'll let you fight with CFA about backlighting and all that stuff. Not my problem. But I agree, something is not quite right in how, at first I got very nervous when you're like, oh, we're going to match it to the Portrait Gallery. I was like, what is going to, what am I going to see? So this was not at all what I was worried about. Great. But it's, the pieces don't quite hang together just yet. And I think the direction to sort of shift that, what I call a hat, down to bring it somewhere closer to the ground plane and make the whole facade dynamic and get away from the 1990s pastiche of different things. I don't think you have to do that. And I think, I don't remember exactly what you said, that both buildings become their own context. I think that's true. I mean, go there. I mean, that you don't have to, it is so big. It is what it is. You're not going to hide it. You don't want to detract from the Portrait Gallery, which is a lovely building across the street, but you're not going to be it. You're not going to design a building of that size. That is it. So, yeah, take your space and and do what you need to do. And I, what I really like, I was at the gallery, I mean, at the arena recently, and I exited on Sixth Street and you have a minute of like, where the heck am I? So integrating that backside of the building into the city so you kind of know where you're going, I think is a really nice, good work. I look forward to it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I think it's great to see the movements. And I think you're going to draw more and more fans. And I think your focus, interior focus to get more retail and more hospitality areas and will be great. And I spent a lot of time in there putting chairs in my people, but I haven't been back much since. But I'm, maybe I can work on that. It's drawing me there.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Dixon. I just want to say thank you again to Jamie and to all of you for coming today to share this. As the executive director said earlier today in a conversation, we have some really tremendously exciting projects coming up. And this is right up there near the top of the list with Pennsylvania Avenue. But this is just, this is a landmark and it is. I love the idea of describing it as the heart of the Alain Fontaine plan. I love the idea of confluence. I'm not as, I mean, how you make that that veil hat, what have you? How that is identified eventually architecturally, I'll leave that up to you because I don't know. I just know what is being said. It's true. The right design is going to come become clear. But I know you need to make it stand off, stand apart, because I stay across the street every month for two years and look at that space. And as a person who works for a city myself, it 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 it, this Capitol area deserves a better building. And I'm sure you all know that. But also, I spent a lot of money in this street in the front of the hotel this Christmas, December, with the all this activated space in the street. And I do think that there needs to be claim more space if you can with the metro and and make make more people space outside and inside so that they they come together. I think that's really what it's asking you to do. It's because otherwise it's just another square box building down in the heart of Launfons Plan and it doesn't do justice to the community. So I'm excited. This is all very exciting. I'm glad you're here early. Thank you for engaging our staff and and team here at the commission. So I look forward to the next time you're here to visit with more updates, but it's very exciting. So, thank you. Yeah. All right, so now we have our last agenda item. And the last agenda item will be another information presentation, this time by, Megan is up at the DAS. So let's hear from Megan Hoddle Cox as she presents on proposed amendments to commission bylaws and delegations.
Good afternoon again, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. I'm presenting an overview of the proposed amendments to the commission's bylaws and delegations. And staff plans to bring the amendments to the commission for a vote at the March 2025 meeting. So first, we're proposing an amendment to the commission's bylaws to allow greater flexibility in meeting formats. As some of you may recall, in April of 2020, the commission amended its bylaws to allow virtual meetings due to the impacts of the pandemic, but conditioned the virtual option on the existence of emergency conditions. While staff in the commission have resumed in-person meetings, applicants and the public are welcome to participate virtually or in person. And the hybrid model allows us to accommodate everyone's needs more readily. As you can see, we are proposing the bylaws be amended to remove the requirement that virtual options only exist during an emergency and instead allow in-person, virtual and hybrid meeting options. This change will be consistent with how the commission has been operating since the chamber's renovation was complete and we have resumed in-person meetings. Second, we are proposing an amendment to the commission's delegations to the executive director. Applications to the commission are divided into three categories: open session items, consent calendar items and delegated action items. Delegated action items are matters that the commission has agreed the executive director can review directly. And the delegations define these as small projects that are consistent with previous commission actions, have no substantial impact on federal interests and do not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, culture or historic resources. The purpose of this amendment is to improve efficiency for staff and commission operations. I would note there's no changes proposed to how we review consent versus open session items. Currently, for delegated actions, the executive director first determines that an application qualifies for delegated action. Then the executive committee reviews and approves that determination when setting the commission's monthly meeting agenda. Finally, the full commission reviews the delegated action items as part of the agenda and approves them without presentation at the meeting. However, currently, the action is automatically moved to open session with a full presentation if one or more members of the public sign up to speak. The only proposed change in this amendment is to remove that last point. While the public will still be allowed to provide written comments on the delegated action items, which are then provided to the executive director, executive committee and commission, the public could not sign up to testify on those items. Whether those items remain delegated action items will remain up to the determination of the executive committee and the commission. As I mentioned, staff plans to bring these proposed amendments back to the commission in March for your consideration and a vote. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you very much. And again, I just want to remind you, this comes up next month on the meeting. But if anyone has any questions right now for Megan, any commissioners have any questions? Okay, hearing no questions, we will start discussion with Vice Chair Hewitt.
Oh, I don't really have any additional comments. I'm very supportive of the amendment. I think it's very timely. And that will help streamline things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green, please.
No, thank you. I think this is terrific. I'm looking forward to this. I think this this will be very lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams.
Starts with my other process, but still allows the public the opportunity to provide comments and stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks for the presentation. I always appreciate updating bylaws and rules and so the stuff that no one thinks is important, but it is very much important to keep us on task and and moving along. So thanks very much.
And thank you. And Commissioner Jacati has stepped away. Okay, Commissioner Cozart.
Thanks to the staff for preparing these. I'm supportive as well. No additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thanks to staff. It's always good. As Commissioner Cash has said, that we take a look once in a while at how we do business. That's important. Just as a piece of housekeeping, maybe do we want to consider that is there any real difference between a hybrid and an in-person meeting these days? It seems like we always have that option, so it may just shorten the the change by a sentence or so. But so look at it, you know, we don't really, we do hybrid all the time. So maybe that's where we want to go to, unless we have to say we'll go completely virtual. So other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham.
I would just associate myself with the other comments that have already been made and and supportive and looking your side.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
Thank you. I'm in full support. It seems very efficient. And I like that. I think it's good for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Dixon.
I like it. I also want to commend the technical folk, because this would not be done, could not be done without all the tech. And a lot of stuff has been going on behind the scenes and all the camera and activity and that, you know. So that's really, really important. And and it shows our, the capability of a very fine staff, not only in terms of the our subject matter, but in terms of our infrastructure.
You're here. I agree with you. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. And I would just like to say that appreciated the staff's presentation and research they did on the proposed changes. And we look forward to next month's meeting where we can conclude this action, but also appreciate, and I also want to associate myself with the comments of the other commissioners. I agree.
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What's behind the green screen?
Well, I would say.
I like the color. It's my favorite color, you know.
Probably the wizard, but I'm not. Okay, so we'll just move on from there. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, this concludes our open session agenda. Our next regular meeting will be on Thursday, March 6th at 1:00 p.m. No, if there's no further business, we stand adjourned.